Cost me an order. Flag's loop.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any citizens to be heard? Already heard you.
Yeah, already heard that. I'm here for the third one now.
Item four, consideration possible action on approving minutes of April 30th, 2015. Any corrections? No?
I'll move. Second through.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item five, consideration possible action on awarding competitive quote for roof repair on education building at the Long County Fairgrounds.
We sent these out, and kind of, and this was after talking to Lowell on what's going to fall under Title 61 and with all the changes of bids and quotes and stuff. So we sent it out with specs to vendors to come look and submit a quote. It does not have to be done as a sealed bid because of the public building. We received two back in time. We did specify that quotes would be accepted until Monday, April the 27th. This was not received until the 29th, so we did not open it. Going to leave that up to you guys to decide what you want to do with it.
Is it postmarked?
It is postmarked the 27th. It was received in my office the 29th.
Open it.
Pardon me?
Open it.
Okay.
That's what I said.
So we ended up with three quotes. This one's Elliott Roofing, $34,371.90.
So it didn't need to be a sealed bid because it was under the $50,000 threshold for public building?
Right. The only thing that I was advised by the Assistant District Attorney is when dealing with the competitive quote clause, that we needed to be assured that all the specs and everyone was told the same thing. So we went ahead and wrote up a set of specs so everyone received the same information and kind of handled it in that manner quasi-sealed bid. It didn't have to be advertised and I opened the quotes and that kind of thing, but it does because they are using money that was budgeted from the general fund to their capital outlay account. It has to be awarded by the board, not by them.
Is this the same roof that the Fair Board was talking about leaking or is that on the show, Lawrence?
Well, they all leaked.
Yeah, the one was really bad though.
I think the one that they were talking about with the day you were there was the arena building that leaked so bad. This is the indoor auditorium where most people have meetings and receptions and stuff.
They were awarded $25,000 in the capital outlay for roof repairs in their budget. National Coating of OK has a quote of $16,988. And Commercial Roof Solutions submitted $43,816.
What was the third one?
$43,000, it's...
What?
Eight sixteen, unbelievable.
That's way too much reverence. I mean, somebody forgot something. Go ahead.
Last time, last year at this time of year, we went out and got estimates so we would know how much to ask for in the budget.
Right.
And at that time, everything was under $20,000. So I don't know whether they've increased that much in a year or if these are just that much higher, but I'm like you, I think they're very high.
My... The gentleman with Commercial Roof Solutions did call me. I think part of his very high cost of $43,000 is the product that he's using. He is the company that did the roof on the Health Department building. But he also added, he's explaining here, we had an approximate $10,000, just right at 11,000 square foot. His calculations have come up to 13,000 square foot. And then with his product cost, I don't know on that other one.
Well, this one has $10,296 square feet.
This is what, and I think they're attached in behind there, but this is what was sent out.
$10,296?
$296 is what?
That's what the approximate Fair Board has.
Yeah, okay. So... So this guy probably got a measure.
Actually, what he said was the roof being corrugated, he took into account that if you flatten it out, it adds more. And he said that he learned that. I'm telling you what the man told me when he did the Health Department rip.
He did, he's trying to stretch it out.
I'm not, it's not best.
I'm just...
I think he just stretched himself out a little bit, but it's just been... Well, it would be longer, but I agree.
Unless there's a compelling reason to spend much as much money to get it, I mean, if they're guaranteed to fix it, the roof, the whole of the roof.
Well, on this, I mean, are we to look at the estimates, then send it to the Fair Board?
No, the ultimate decision lies on this board. The Fair Board was told of the two quotes that I had opened, obviously, I hadn't opened the one. And they decided there was such a vast difference in them that they didn't feel that it needed to go to them first for me to go ahead and bring it here. That's what I was told.
Well, there's a lot of money on the table there. I guess they want to say first.
There are lots of difference.
The Fair Board knew that they didn't have $47,000.
Right.
So they knew it was beyond them anyway.
So $43,000.
Only $25,000 was allotted. And that originally was planned to also include taking off that stone on the Carnegie Building. So that was, we were hoping...
That one part did.
Yeah, and that's a different bid. So we were hoping to do both things with that $25,000.
So then we really do need to go with the $16,000.
I mean, unless there's a, I mean, a compelling reason, if you've got a $30,000 bid and a $16,000, and the $30,000 bid's guaranteed the last 20 years and $16,000 bid's guaranteed the last five years, then there's a value add there, but I don't see that with this bid.
Does it have any guarantee on it, the $16,000?
You're more welcome coming, we can go after, but no, I don't see that.
I'm a trustee as far as construction that...
Now, I will say that in the specs that went out, it does state shall include a minimum 10-year warranty on all material and labor.
Oh, it's 10 years, period? Yeah, that's what we asked for.
And I don't know if you saw these or not. This is what went out to them.
I don't know apples for apples on this roofing. I mean, I know $16,000, I made doubles.
Yeah, we could afford to get that one done twice at that price.
10-year warranty. I personally would have to go with the $16,000.
Nah, I say, good with that. All in favor? Aye.
Monty, what's the name of that one?
That wasn't the one we just opened, was it?
The one we just opened is Elliott Roofing, and I believe it was $33,000.
Not that it makes any difference, I was just curious.
So I said I didn't open it just because I wanted you all to make that decision on the date.
I mean, it sounded like the post did it in good faith as far as getting it mailed from there, supposed to. If the US Postal Service slips and forgets to get it here, but it's really not their fault, you know?
And I understand.
Yeah, they postmarked them.
Being a low bid and it fits in the budget, I would, I guess we already made a motion, voted.
I said aye.
National Coating.
Motion carries. You bet.
Kathy, good luck on the charge.
Kathy, I'm going to put a copy of this in your folder.
Okay.
So what's your next job going to be?
May I sit in my three kids?
That's the most fun.
That's a lot of work though.
That's what my wife...
I know, it's one of those fun but unpaid jobs.
Yes.
Thanks y'all.
Item six, consideration possible action on supplemental and modification agreement number two with ODOT for project number 153 and the whole bridge over Skeleton Creek.
It is. I guess they hadn't figured out enough money, so...
Man, they always want more. Need to be safer, but safe as possible.
Well, they tell me I gotta have it, so I'd make a motion to approve.
I say, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
So along on the served, last week I went and did a compilation of all the served projects for all of Long County, not just District One. So I got a whole, I got a whole list. I'm going to send that to the, to you guys so we can make sure that what we think, since I sat on that board, since, so I don't miss anything. I just want to double check, make sure that we've got everything documented that we're supposed to have.
I'm still disappointed with them. Yeah, we thought we could do overlays and now they're saying, no, you have to have the safest roads possible.
Does it appear that any of the previously awarded served money is going to get pulled back with this budget stuff?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a little bit too...
I'm holding stuff myself.
Well, I ask because we have some of the CBI, the CBRI money committed towards some of those projects, but it just wasn't.
Most of my projects are all bridges.
Well, I'm hoping to keep at least some of that Luther Road. We'll see how it works out.
You know, when they first came out with that served money, they wanted us to mainly do bridges. You know, it wasn't long it turned into, everyone was turning in roads and...
Well, here's an interesting fact that we all are going to see in a minute. This is the lowest month we've ever received for CIRB money.
Wow.
Just changed over $20,000.
Wow. That doesn't bother you. All right. Did we pass that one?
Yes.
Okay. Now, item seven, consideration possible action on approving resolution accepting $500 donation from Lakeview Heights Road Edition, Edition Number Two, for road materials to be placed on Seward Road and Post.
Second.
Aye. Consideration possible action on approving detention transportation claim in the amount of $1,412.82 for March of 15.
I'll move it along. What's that for? Travel claim for Sheriff's Department, transport in.
Yeah.
The state reimburses for juvenile transportation.
I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, consideration possible action on approving permanent road crossing permit for Devon Energy, Cross Western. Oh, that's in yours, Monty.
Monty, this is the one that they spoke to you that they just discovered was one of those lines they had missed getting the permit on that permanent, so this is to make a for that.
Let's pretty good them come back. I believe it will approve.
Second. Whatever. All in favor, aye. Motion carries. Consideration possible action approving resolutions upon receiving officer's...
Chairman, I have nothing for 10 and 11.
No 10 or 11. Stand your speech. Consideration and possible action on consent of due.
Chairman, this transfer is yours. I need your signature here as the officer and then down there for the board.
So Troy, while I'm here, maybe we ought to look at our CBRI commitments.
Well, and that's why I wondered how much would be affected.
That's why I should have put the whole list together and looking at where the matching monies are coming from, if there are matching, I mean, there's, there's just a whole puzzle there to look at.
I will update the ledger sheet when I get this money put on and send that Excel out to everyone.
Yeah, well, going off the bid book and I also called...
These are the transfers this year to fiscal year.
Asphalt paving, seeing as how they have the bid on asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
On Cooksy Road, that project I was wanting to do, it's going to be about $175,000. So if I could, I'd like to, if we can finagle on the CBRI commitment, I'd like to maybe grab a little money out of the CBRI.
Now, how much and how soon?
Well, I really don't.
Are you trying to encumber before the end of the fiscal year?
I am. I got the 100.
Off the top of my head, I don't, you know, I'm not recalling anything expected to come out of there in a large chunk anytime critically soon, but I'll have to look at that.
Well, if I go with the, off the bid, if I don't bid the project, it's $175,000, I got the 100.
Well, Cheryl, and this ain't, I told me to finish the fiscal year as things are with that asphalt paving bid.
All right. How's the board feel about that? I don't know.
About what?
Going to the end of the fiscal year off the bid that we have.
Yeah. Do our, the bids, do the six, are they six-month bids? Six-month bid? Does it go to the end of the fiscal year, the six-month?
The issue is that they're changing the rules on the bid procedures and what, some of the items we've done under six-month bid are no longer going to be allowed to be done that way.
And when? Third wind?
Well, July first. That, that's what the Auditor's Office has said. We could work through what we have now.
Do we have anything in writing from the Auditor's Office saying that or we just got a phone call?
No, I'm going to another meeting on Thursday.
Please do, and then I don't have a problem with it. But yeah, as long as you, as long as we got something in writing that says, no, you said, right here.
So I guess we're not like that. I've got the CBRI would be $75,000. Board approval.
So, would you like that on the next, we put the commitments for the board to approve? Would you like that on the next agenda?
Please, yeah. That would still give me time to get it in the calendar.
Yep. I may have one covered also.
If you have something for that, you don't have to get me any higher.
What else we got on 12?
Their cash funds are headed down that way.
Whole whopping $26.81.
Wonder how come the CIRB's so low this time? What would be the...
I don't know.
Is that what they're hearing right now down there or is there one? No, that's one, so...
Sales tax is really pitiful too.
Sales tax was down this month.
Oak Springs, so that's what they got, is 99 bucks?
That was on that one apportionment run last month. Somebody paid their taxes. Oak Springs actually has some money. Of course, it's been going for a long, long time.
And that's like a road bid.
It is a rural road district.
So...
We have four.
Who's authorized to spend money out of that account?
At this point in time, nobody on any of them.
That's kind of weird.
They're not, they're not, as they're set up, I don't feel they're a good deal.
5431.
DA's drug fund, they buy the drugs out of that?
Yeah, most of them. But they don't have contributed to. On the jail operation...
64 cents.
On the jail operation, cash fund here?
Yes, sir.
Transferring $425,000 and change to various accounts. What accounts are they? I mean, I can't tell from reading this is what I'm asking.
Okay, that's money for the jail trust wrote a check to the jail, to the Sheriff's Department for the jail operation account. This is salaries, part-time salaries.
It just looks like numbers to me.
Like that?
Just looks like numbers to me.
And that's just...
Just looks like numbers to me. I don't know what it is.
Would you like, would you like me to write that on here?
Yes, ma'am. That was, I mean, I'd just like to know what I'm approving.
Last draw comes out. Trust. See the Springer Edge Road District, they got $4.50 to repair.
Yeah.
Must be a short road.
Maybe it's another one, $152 in there, I think. Just take the digital suit and pay it. Here it goes. So it had to bring in more than what, a few hundred dollars a year?
I think right now, yeah, I think, I don't even think.
So these sal...
Yes, sir.
These salaries, so $250,000 in salaries, that's salaries for whom?
The jail staff.
All of the jail staff?
Most all of the jail staff is paid from that salary account, yes, sir.
Evergreen Road, really 64 cents?
It actually costs more money, it costs the county money to have those in the, the four districts.
Wow. Special fuel taxes down almost half. Yeah, $3.60. Last time I think I was on a date. I don't even know why they collect that. I think it costs more to send us $3.68 than it does to collect it, if it would.
Special fuel is that I see in being, I guess.
Troy, do you know the process after one of them road districts is formed, how it can make it go away?
To dissolve one, I don't know. They're set up by statute, they're supposed to have a board and meetings and such, but there's no oversight once they're established.
Or provisions.
If someone were to walk in today and decide they wanted to do some roadwork, we'd end up having to have the DA's office get them lined out as to something. We have nothing. They're established and then I think what happens is people move, different people come around, no one has, has followed up, but because it's a levy on, on out of the lawroom on their property, it stays on that property tax bill. And I can't remember if it's Oak Springs, we have folders, just like every office has a folder, so we have a folder there that I put in there. They're mostly balancing. I think the paperwork is in there from at least '08, '09. It's still in there. Now, Oak Springs actually has, oh, probably 70,000 or 80,000 in their accounts, but they've been collecting it for more than 10 years.
So where's this Oak Springs at?
It's down, I believe it, yeah.
What's that?
Oak Springs Edition is in your district, I believe.
It's got about 70,000 or 80,000 in there.
So they got about 80,000 sitting there that they can't use until they form a board, then they can spend 80 grand on their road.
I'm sure they don't know that.
That's why I was telling you. If I made a lie, I want to tell them.
Why is there a difference between highway sales tax and sales tax fire district? Why is there a difference in the sums?
They should do the same, shouldn't they? Quarter cent's a quarter cent.
It comes to me from the Treasurer's Office.
I'm just asking a question.
I think because we have to deal in whole cents, so this month, Highway lost a penny.
It's more than a cent.
2976, 29481. Their interest is included for this total.
Uh-huh. And?
So if you...
Interest.
If you take this, 7629482, which is actual sales tax...
Where did the interest come from?
Each of them gets interest monthly, Highway gets interest monthly also.
Why aren't they the same then?
Because it's prorated on the amount of money in the bank allotted to each fund.
Okay, so this interest is more than that, right?
General Fund has more money lying there to collect interest on.
Okay, so why is this more than this? That's why I don't understand the numbers.
7629481 is sales tax plus their interest is 76814. Your interest, Highway interest is not on this one, it's on your other highway account. So this is the total that they went to the Fire Department. The interest on their fund at the bank and their...
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, but it just, how come interest don't show up on the...
It shows up on your other highway. I don't know if you've got to it yet.
Yeah, I've been past the...
If you look, not that one.
There should be, in my simple little mind, there should be three sales tax appropriations, right? And they should all be the same because they're all 4 cent, 4 cent, 4 cent, share, fire.
And, and they are, the difference...
But they don't show up the same as on the paperwork we're looking at here. I guess that's kind of what's confusing me. But they don't show up the same as on, on the paperwork we're looking at here, I guess that's kind of what's confusing me.
Actually, if you look here, the two are split out here also. Where it's showing the interest and the O T C sales tax for that total.
Or.
What is that? That's from fire.
Your interest for highway fund is here.
So I guess my question would be, do we not get interest for this?
It's included in the highway. The fund, the fund is the highway fund.
Okay.
I, I can ask Sherry, I mean, if you all want.
It's, it's not consistent. I, I would like to see it consistent, I mean, as we're looking at here. They don't, they don't classify, our fire department only has one account.
Exactly.
And we have many, so they just, ours is all.
I, I can see what Sherry can do. If you'll notice here on your highway.
It takes too much math for me from one piece of paper to another to figure that one out.
Here is your highway catch, and here's the interest that went into each one of the M and Os.
So, um, each of the M and Os, so there's a show though, sales tax.
It's gonna be all in there. I, I can ask her about trying to separate that out. That is something the treasurer's office does. Your sales tax money is separate, it has to be by law.
So with that being said, you think that the interest on that would be with it?
And, and I don't think that was something Sherry thought. Like I said, that, that's the treasurer's office, I will talk to her about it.
Well, I would prefer to see it that way if we could, unless there's a legal reason why it can't be that way. And if so, if Loaf could write a short little note explaining that, that would be good.
I'll ask her.
See, and then this one doesn't turn out right. They had something else on there. That would then interest, uh, get in my cards, see it's, it's just hard.
Well, we get a jail operating fund, that's, that's not the sales tax.
This is.
Here's.
Oh, that, that's right.
And here's one. Here, here's the sales tax, then they also have a deposit for phone cards, they have a deposit, they receive medical reimbursement funds.
Do they get interest on their sales tax as well? Or is that recorded? If, if they don't. And if they don't, why not?
I will check.
Thank you. All right, thanks for the feedback. Anything else?
It's headed that way.
Does this close out the jail operation fund?
Well, I can tell you they got their last draw from the jail trust.
Uh-huh, that's four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, but the, uh, I was hoping we could get away with the jail trust at the end of the fiscal year.
Uh-huh.
But I think we'll have to keep it intact until, we're, we're gonna hold, I can't remember what we decided, twenty-five thousand in reserve in case anyone come back and file a claim on the tax.
Something like that, that makes sense.
And I think we gotta do that for two years.
Yep.
So at the end of the fiscal year, we was gonna go to a, uh, annual meeting.
And be instead of a monthly meeting and just hold that money in reserve. I was hoping we could just get away with it. But that's not gonna be the case. We want to write that reclaimer again, because we have to go out for bid.
The bid will put you over fifteen thousand dollars for this fiscal year, you will.
Look for the whole county.
That would not.
I'm just.
That doesn't pass.
Just asking.
That's fifteen thousand for the county, right?
So same way on, on like hauling rock, you can spend up to fifteen having someone truck it in, just 'cause you went to another county, no.
So that's fifteen thousand for the whole county. Probably a day.
Fifteen thousand per district?
No.
It's technically for the county, but that's why we did not. And the, the rock being hauled in bid will still be allowed in the manner we've been doing it. Because the rock and the hauling are being purchased from the same vendor.
That's a service, service.
And they're not going spreading it, they're delivering it to a pile, so we will be able to continue the six month bid for that.
If they stop piling, but not asphalt, because that's going to a site for a project, I guess, hot asphalt.
No, that's silly.
No, asphalt we can, provided the county equipment employees are the ones actually using it. You're just getting the product. We will not be able to do asphalt laid in place on a six month bid any longer.
What's Harry Jones said differently during that presentation?
Pardon me?
Why not?
On the asphalt laid in place, because they've now determined that that is a service and will fall under Title sixty-one, not Title nineteen.
Who's the?
The auditor's office.
The auditor's office, Gary Jones.
Yeah, I went to you on that. We got anything in writing from them saying that?
He did, he said presentation back.
He, he did the echo class, there's gonna be regional classes statewide on all of these bid changes. Um, I will get you copies of what I received, I have a flyer on my desk that I received at clerk school last week.
And then in about four months, they'll jump up and change it again.
Yeah. You know it. So this is an opinion based on?
Well, supposedly that new deputy that he has anyhow went all the way back to nineteen fifteen and took a look at all the legislation plus all the H E rulings ever since, and they've come up with all of this. So he made that presentation with her, she made the main presentation at the echo conference, see this last one.
And B P Os?
So I recorded it.
You just did those, that complete consent.
I second.
Did someone, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In citizen desiring to be heard and hearing none comments, now since questions by the board.
I would just like on the agenda on the C I R B
Yep.
for commitments, I'd like to ask for that seventy-five on that project.
And, and what's the name of the project, Monty?
Uh, I guess we can call it West Cooksy Road. Be west of State Highway seventy-four, uh, for a mile and a half.
Beginning at seventy-four in Cooksy?
That'd be for a two inch overlay with tackle and.
Okay.
Not so many striking, but I'll, I'll dig that up.
That's another bid, we're not available to do six month anymore, I go.
Do, do Delacy Road, do Delacy Road, I did mine, you do your, straight through from thirty-three over to seventy-four. Oh, seventy-seven, oh, you're talking about seventy-four in Cooksy. Seventy-seven to thirty-three on Delacy Road at New Speed.
Seventy-seven, where's the Delacy Road at?
You know, the old Delacy plant, that's, uh, kind of goes seventy-six.
So you're wanting to pay from where?
Highway thirty-three over to Highway seventy-seven, did a nice altering route for everybody, get around town. Straight through.
So you've got your half of the map?
Not yet.
Because most of that's yours.
Well, that half is, about two and a half miles, and there's about. Anyhow, it's a thought.
Yeah, I'd like to do it, but we don't have plenty today.
Throw it into the planning effort.
I make motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor? Outta here.